I don't even know. Five, oh, it is five.
Are you guys ready? Sure, thank you. Okay, so the May 14th, 2025 regular meetings of Board of Selectmen will come to order. Please join us in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, invincible, with liberty and justice as our strong.
Thank you. Any comments from? Chris, nothing at all. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So just under correspondence, Chris Gons submitted an application for the Rec Commission. We'll thank him and we can take that up at the next meeting. No, actually, no appointment, reappointment, reservations for I think the first time in a long time.
I got a question on that. Waterfront commission, we have four applicants.
But there's an opening.
There's no openings yet. I didn't know whether, are they coming up?
We had heard that someone was going to be stepping down, but he hasn't officially submitted anything. So until that happens, and then we'd also asked the chair and if you want to reread this to them, like if there's any members who haven't been able to attend, you know, there is a lot of interest, so they could potentially be stepping down.
Yeah, there may be some that wants to step down.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you. But great to see interest in it.
Yeah.
Okay, so under all business, you, we've decided to table this to give you guys some more time for the manufacturing machinery and equipment exemption request from Westcon Corporation. So I don't, I'm happy to go back into background if you guys need it, or if you just want to open it for discussion before we make any motion. And I think we have someone from Westcon, sorry, it was not the last meeting, so here with us if you guys have any questions.
No, I haven't seen any really new information that would change my mind.
Now, I had a long talk with the assessor, with Jennifer. Did some additional research, so I kind of did some due diligence into this and didn't want mine either.
Right, so what are you, do you, either of you want to share which way you're going, or you could make a motion if you're feeling like it's ready?
I'm just, you know, it's hard, well, it's hard to define hardship. I go back to the previous one, the only one that I've ever approved, because we don't see many of them at all. It was during COVID. There were some serious hardships during COVID. I mean, you know, it was hard to, banks were closed, there was a lot of stuff going on. I struggle with this as a hardship, especially since it took like six months, you know, for them to actually, you know, call and submit something. You know, it's hard to say, you know, a turnover in staff or anything, you know, of a large company. I struggle with, is that really a hardship? And I, I know maybe you don't have a definition of it, but that's kind of my opinion, and after talking to Jennifer and doing some research and implying to say, I don't feel like it's a hardship.
And what do you?
Yeah, I feel the same as, as a small business owner in town, someone that files my personal property declaration, usually on time, when the past, when it hasn't been on time, I pay it off, so.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, I feel bad, but you know, we're a town, we've got a town, I just, I think that it's unwarranted.
Do you have any questions, seeing that we have someone here? Do you feel like you have all the information that you need?
Yeah.
I don't.
Do you want, if you want to make a motion then? Heard about me too?
Yeah, why don't you make emotions?
So I guess based on what I'm hearing, you guys would like to have a motion to deny the request from Westcon for an exemption of manufacturing machinery and equipment due to not meeting the filing deadline. Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
No, second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, sorry. And then, okay, under new business, we have our superintendent here. You're welcome to come forward if you want to share anything, but all this, you guys should have seen in your packet, we received notification from our superintendent of schools that the Board of Education voted on April 24th to request that the Board of Selectmen consider establishing a building committee for the purposes of potentially renovating or building a new Stonington Middle School. So before making any motion, Marian, do you want to share anything else?
Sure, I mean, I think most of the people here, it's not, okay, they want me on camera here. Most of the people are probably aware, a little over a year ago, our facilities director had a suspicion that there was something significantly wrong with the then Stonington Middle School located at that time at 204 Miss Tuxick Avenue. And with some engineering consultants from Fussin' O'Neil, sure enough, they, they have established that there was a failure, a potential failure on the second floor that needed to be remedied. Before this school year, the children are going to re-enter that building. Upon further study, there were some significant issues with the foundation that we actually have the remaining useful life study that's on our website now, and I dropped hard copies too, if anybody needs to have one of those, they're, they're welcome to. But the long and short of it is, we're dealing right now with the town and the Board of Finance related to the bond about looking at short-term solutions for the students of the middle school, looking to keep them at that Pocatuck site, based on the remaining useful life study costs to remediate the site there. But also, it's no secret that that's only a temporary solution, and so based on what's going on in town with building, based on the information we have about the Mystic Tuxic site, the constraints right now at the middle school site up on Field Street, we think that it's time to ask the Selectmen to move forward and establish a K-12 building committee, keeping in mind that it's not just the middle school, you may have to look at that high school as being a possible site. I mean, there's a lot of nuances to this. That high school now was renovated in 2004, it no longer is a new building, is that a possible site for a middle school, high school? Do we renovate the Pocatuck site? Is there another site? What do you want to do with the Mystic site? So all of those questions need to be entertained by a K-12 building committee, and also don't forget district office personnel that need to live somewhere. And so that's why we're here, to request that be established.
Can you leave that question to someone?
No, I, you know, just some comments, I spent a number of years on the K-12 building committee, and it's true, it's the building committee needs to look at those options. And the previous building committee, we had actually looked at the need for a new middle school, so it's not an unknown issue at the time, you know, we had to make a choice, which they'll have to do again. So the building committee would look at what's the cost to repair, rebuild, you know, do whatever, or add something else, and that really, you know, would be the purview of the building committee. And the Board of Ed would come up with the ed specs to see, here's what we need, and then the building committee could take a look at it and hire experts to come in and do those assessments and work with the Board of Ed, work with the town.
If I may speak to Ted's comments too, we are putting together ed specs in the informal sense, not in the technical sense that you would hire a firm to do. And so with that in mind, we're visiting area middle schools that are relatively new and would be funded under the latest laws as far as reimbursement goes, so that's, that's a new mindset, where not every teacher would have their classroom, that teachers would be sharing, there'd be more common areas. What we have noticed, when you're thinking about putting, if you move forward with this, when you're putting that committee together, is have a small agile team with members on it that have dual roles. For instance, we have parents that are architects and engineers, we have select people who are, have technical backgrounds. And the one ask that I've noticed as a, as a trend is to please, please make sure that you have somebody from our public safety, our law, this building on that team, because there have been obvious situations where we see design flaws in the architecture that put the building at a safety risk that is unnecessary, so we wouldn't want anything in the design that is there for aesthetics and poses additional cost down the line once the folks are in that building and are living it, that we want to do it right. So just be thoughtful about that. But I did come into the district on the heels of that building committee, and it was a very large committee, and large committees aren't necessarily the best. So again, that's why my recommendation would be find people with those dual, dual roles, and please, please, please keep parents in mind who have young children or children not even in the schools yet, that really are future focused. Building schools is different than building other facilities, it's a very specialized area, has different kinds of requirements, different kinds of uses, and it requires a different expertise. So that is our ask, and if I can assist in any way, let me know, any questions?
Ben, do you have any questions for Marian?
No, not for Marian, I'm more on process, I guess, who would determine how many members there are?
We would, we would. We would, so basically, I was going to make a motion to kind of be able to engage you guys, but to then work with the town attorney to create an actual resolution that would establish the K-12 building committee for the purpose of kind of examining the needs of the middle school, with the understanding that might touch on other schools, and then all, you know, put in kind of the language that we need to for, we'd only do this resolution once. So the idea of this committee might be standing for a few years, to be sure it has the right language, to be then authorized to go to the Connecticut Department of Education for the funding and the reimbursement, so part of the reason also why to work with the town attorney, to be sure we have all the right language in the resolution. But in that resolution, we can lay out also like the characteristics of the type of backgrounds that we think would be useful, and we can do it with like we've done with some boards and committees, where it's like, you know, preference shall be given to, but not necessarily pigeonholing ourselves, and also say how many members. So that way, it's all outlined, and then it's up to the Board of Selectmen to populate that, just like we do with any other board.
We wouldn't be making those decisions now.
No, we, right now, you, what I was going to do, that motion, is just to be able to send this to the town attorney, to say, we do want you to really quickly work on this resolution, so it's done by our next meeting, so then we could vote on the resolution, and it'd be part of, which we'll talk around a minute, sending to the town meeting in June.
But that resolution would, would be filled out with more information in terms of the number of members and so forth.
Yeah, we don't necess, our understanding from past ones, like you, we don't necessarily have to do that in the resolution, but it can be helpful, because then residents and voters know exactly what they're voting on. But that's something, again, we can, we will try and get you the resolution ahead of, obviously, next meeting, so that way you have time to look at it, and we can tweak it live time, or we'll get it to you in advance, so if you have feedback, you can send it to Stacy, and she can run it by the attorney.
Because in the past, there was a member of the Board of Finance, a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Ed, and then additional members.
Different people. And I think like we had talked about, Marian just brought up the public safety, which I hadn't thought about, but we had said like people with, you know, finance, or building, or architect, or engineering backgrounds, or also like people who've been involved in this type of work in the past, like, you know, like a pulse starter or something, or someone who's already ushered this type of process in, so a way to write it, so we're not necessarily, you know, definitely not pre-picking people and definitely not predetermining, then we're stuck with this type of person, but to show that we're getting preference to certain types of people, because we think it'd be helpful for the background, for the committee. And then that way, if, or, you know, we're not here, and someone else might be finding, you know, vacancies, or filling, different board members, they have something that guides them and helps them to stay, I think, true to the focus.
Yeah.
Any questions for Marian or Stacy?
No, I think it's time. I mean, you know, it's been an issue, and this is the way we need to handle it, this is the way as a town we've handled it in the past, and.
Yeah, and I think, you know, our hope, hope is starting this early, not really, but starting this now, will be able to hopefully give this group kind of a neutral, third-party point of view, no kind of necessarily vested interest, just, you know, really kind of look at it holistically, get all the data that's already been collected, move forward with getting new data, and be able to really be that focal point for all these different stakeholders, whether they're upcoming parents, or people concerned about taxes going up, or, you know, kind of financial backgrounds, all these different things, to have a group that's really dedicated to just that. Because I think, you know, people kind of demanding time on the Board of Finance, or demanding time with the Board of Ed on this, it'd be great to have one dedicated group that kind of represents all these perspectives in one place.
And that group will be the one that looks at, obviously, we, we need a short-term solution, and that was part of the bond, and that's different, but that group will be the ones that look at, is it worth repairing, or taking the wing down, or doing something like that? Which is what we have examined all in tree schools.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just, I guess my initial concern is that just forming this committee doesn't presuppose that we're going to build a new school.
No, exactly.
Oh, absolutely not.
No, yeah, and that's exactly, and that's where.
Not that we maybe shouldn't, but.
It shouldn't pre, yeah, yeah.
That's what you look into, can you repair?
I don't think it was your real one.
Well, can you repair the other? You know, what are the things that need to be updated and repaired, and how much of that versus building a new school?
No, that's where I'm concerned, but, yeah.
And I think it'll be good to look at the language, because I could easily miss it on the town attorney, couldn't easily miss it, that we have the right language in there, that especially voters who have to vote on the side of town meeting don't think, hey, we're coming in with a, we're getting a new school.
Precedent.
Like a already decided outcome, because the whole point is to be transparent and really engage in our process.
Or also not have people come after the fact and say, well, we voted to, to form this committee, it's why we're building this.
Yeah, exactly, words.
And I have emphasized over and over with the ed spec committee that we're doing, is that the ed specs are location independent.
Yeah.
So it's that, what do you visualize that we need, it doesn't matter what the location is. So that's neutral, that's a neutral document.
Yeah.
Under construction.
But it's a really, it is a really important point.
Yeah.
I think to be clear for all different people who are looking at this issue.
Putting the people on the committee.
I mean, we looked at that before, we looked at possible new locations, but then you have to consider a lot of things. Okay, what does it cost to demo and repair? You have, you have to update, potentially hazardous building materials versus building, and where, you have to find a location, and it can't just be any location, you know, so.
It's tricky, it's tricky. This group is going to have their work cut out for them, but if we find the right people, I think we could really come up with.
But I agree, keeping it small, as small as possible.
Yeah, so yeah, let's think about that. So, okay, I'm going to put to this, but I guess, could I get a motion to work with the town attorney to create a resolution establishing a K-12 building committee? And I'll just, yeah, that'll be good, that.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We won't hold it against you if you guys leave. So I have really exciting news, not that that wasn't exciting, but as you guys know, we've been talking about this for a little while, we've been working tight, identify a, for like, I feel like a while now, a possible location for a new recreational field to support, obviously, the ongoing requests from community members for an additional recreational field. And we've been working with, you know, Human Services, REC, Department of Public Works, different youth teams, and the school tried to, you know, look at possible locations, and basically, it was very challenging, but then we finally found a possible location at the VFW, and after a number of meetings with their leadership, and then follow-up with a wetland soil scientist to ensure that it was actually, you know, a place we could put a field, it was all found to be viable, and the VFW did hold an official vote in support of the town. I'm sure there's been some more back and forth, that felt like it almost fell apart, but it came back together again. They did agree that the town could purchase the back half of their property, we can use our open space funding for it, it would be $285,000, and we can cover that with our open space money. And the VFW, as of this week, signed a non-binding, but intent to sell agreement, and so we feel like we're ready to put this forward to planning zoning, for, which we'll know better, but for an 824 review. And then after that, we would be looking to send it to a town meeting to see if, you know, residents support it. And again, this would just be to purchase the land, this is not the money to actually create the fields, which we still have to figure out. But I don't know, it was like, it was a lot, but again, I can't thank the VFW enough, they, you know, really came together and understood the need from the community, and it's obviously right next to our fields, existing fields, so it's, I mean, you couldn't ask for a better location. Public Works was really happy, because beyond the demand on it, it's also really bad for the fields, because they don't get to rest at all, and they obviously take a lot of pride in that. And then for the poor rec team that has to work with the school and all the nonprofit teams to balance out the use of all the fields, and then like we said, particularly youth football, cheer and lacrosse, who, some of whom came to these meetings that are kind of, you know, practicing in, you know, sides of fields in different locations, this would just be really, it would mean a lot to a lot of people. So it's, you know, obviously, there's still a lot of steps that are left, but this was a big one, so I will pause for any questions or comments or.
So my comments, good comments, because when I saw these notes and everything, and just because it's neat what I do. I looked at historic maps and air photos, maps going back to the 1800s, air photos going back to the 30s, just to confirm, there have been some areas in town where there was filling, like, you know, coastal filling, and they filled it with trash or junk, including right across the street. But it looks good, it doesn't, I mean, I'm not saying that there wasn't filling there, because there's been filling all through that area, but it doesn't look on any of the photos like it's trash filling.
And it's been there for a while.
It's been there for a long time, so I was really happy to see that, so maybe feel better about this.
No, I, I support 100% the purchase and, you know, of additional athletic fields. The use of open space funds, not so much. But more than that, more than how I feel about it personally, I just, I hope that it wouldn't be up to two members of the Board of Selectmen to decide to spend open space funds.
Has to go, well, the open space is there, and that doesn't need to go to the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance, but the town meeting will be approving it, and will say at that town meeting, this is how we plan to fund it, so if people are against it, they can.
Okay, well, I, I would go one step further, we have a conservation commission that advises on purchase of open space, so I would hope that it would get rooted to them first for comment, and that their comments would be taken into consideration.
Yeah, we can send it. And again, just the state, even though this is our money more than anything, but the state statute does say you can use it for recreation.
Oh, no, I understand, I accept that it's allowed, whether it's, whether it's advisable or desirable is another question, or are there sources for? Well, like you said, it's not, it's not up to my personal opinion, it's more, but I think conservation commission certainly should weigh in on, and that their, their consideration should be, should be relayed to the town meeting.
We'll do that tomorrow, be sure Stuart and them will see it. And I will just say, and again, I'll try and break, break out the numbers, but I think, since we've been here, the money we've spent from the open space fund for Pitotuck and all, Harvey, we're all pure kind of conservation, so I kind of, I like the balance that we're not doing something, because again, we've gotten complaints from residents that they want more recreational space and the funding to go towards that, so, but I'll look at the exact breakdown, because I don't know the numbers off the top of my head of how much this would be versus how much we spent on the more pure, you know, traditional conservation for nature-based purposes, but we'll be sure if the conservation commission.
No, I think it makes sense for them to look at.
Yeah, just like planning zoning.
There is an advisory.
So can I get a motion to approve referring the rear field space of the VFW property located at 160 162 South Broad Street to Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 review?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Okay, so next discussion is, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll be voting to set the call for a town meeting on June 16th to include the following items, there could possibly be another item from Public Works, but it's looking unlikely right now, but they'll get it in as quick as they can, if they can. So I just wanted to see if you guys had any discussions, or questions, or things you wanted to be sure to see before the next Board of Selectmen meeting. So we have the Stonington Harbor Management Plan ordinance, we have the volunteer fire EMS tax abatement, the open burning ordinance, the establishment of the K-12 building committee, and the acquisition of the rear field space at the VFW.
So I'd love to see the open burning ordinance sent us, I feel like I saw it, but I'm, I was looking for it, I didn't, but if you could resend it, that would be helpful, because the other one, I remember discussing, the first one, why it makes sense, this with the ordinance and the plan, because then you can update the plan and not have to worry about the ordinance, we've talked a lot about the EMS abatement and the K-12, so, nope, that doesn't make sense.
So can you, since I haven't opened up any of those files yet, the Harvard Management, can you just summarize that again?
So what it was is, we currently have, and tell me if I'm wrong on this.
Yeah, you have it, yeah.
The ordinance and the plan are one document.
Yeah.
And it makes sense to update the plan, I mean, you want to update it every few years, but to do that, that means you're updating the ordinance, which means you're going through town meeting.
So this will pull a plan out of that process?
Yes, so there'll still be the ordinance, which to change it.
But the Harvard Management Commission will be.
Be able to update the plan.
Without town meeting.
Yeah, is that correct? Did I do that right?
Yeah, they're separating.
Yeah, so they, because they can update the plan without having a town meeting. Or maybe not, maybe they do, but it's, it's not the same as the ordinance. I remembered it was going to, they talked to us, it was going to make it easier.
Easier, yeah.
Yeah, because it makes sense to be able to update the plan, if not yearly, every two or three years, you know, things change.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah, read through it, and then I'm sure the chair would be happy to, yeah, be more, but again, if you can look at it sooner, that way if you have questions, we can be sure to get to the, the chair office, you guys can reach out, but if you have questions for us, we can get to them.
Okay, yeah, and if you resend that, I, I remember seeing it come in, but then I couldn't find it, so.
Yeah, Captain Schneider.
Yeah, they're all separate PDFs.
Yeah, Captain Schneider was leading, leading the open burn ordinance, so if one you read it, if you do have questions about it, just reach out, you can reach out to him directly.
Okay.
Okay, so just FYI, then, there's a request to use the parking lot at the 4th District Voting Hall and 49 North Stonington Road for the Wood and Boat Show, that comes up every year, June 25th to the 29th.
Make a motion to accept the, or approve the parking lot use from Voting Hall and 49 North Stonington Road for the Boat Show.
Second, all right, any discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Great, comments?
So I only have one, but if you have more, you want to go first?
No, you go first.
Okay, it's pretty quick, just because I was, it's one of those where somebody comes up to you in the grocery store, and I've commented, so, I'm in touch, I have a long time. A group that wants to buy boats that's being stored at the old Mystic School, and they're willing to pay money for them, and they say it has to be approved by the Selectmen.
This is a com, we'll circle back, and actually, I think I saw that same person today, and we had emails back and forth between Jim and Alicia about this, because it was a whole, there needs to be, I think, a different town policy, and then it might have to go to a town, it was a very, I can't remember what time, but it was a very convoluted, complicated thing, and then I honestly don't know where we, they might, they might have gotten busy, so I'll go back and be sure we.
Did you say boats?
They're boats.
It's not, it's not allowed by something, either.
Well, they want to buy them and get them out of there, and they, or getting.
I think they're abandoned, they're abandoned.
I thought you said somebody wanted to store boats.
No, 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 they're abandoned, buy these, they're like abandoned, but they're.
But because they're on the school property, it has to be approved, like, by.
It's something very.
They disappear.
Yeah, it's yours, yeah.
We did sell a boat quite a while ago, and it ended up putting it up on like Town Hall property, but there's a big process.
There's a big process, and I think they were trying to track down, the first day to see if they could find the original owner, it was a whole, it was, it was a lot, and I think it just got very complicated, and then other things came up, so.
So again, they approached me, and they still would like to buy it, and they're getting in worse, worse shape, but they think they can fix them up, and they might.
You need to.
This is at 49 North Stonington?
Yeah, yeah, the old Mystic thing, Jim and Alicia. So we'll follow up with that this weekend and circle back to give you like a real update. Do you want to say anything else?
Well, my only other, just going to ask about the boat.
Yeah, I was going to say the boat, oh, okay.
But if you're going to talk about the boat, that's good. I'll be real quick, the only thing, I, I attended that meeting last week on the multimodal pathway, good turnout, some good discussion, but obviously, because of the need for the room, I think the discussion was kind of cut short, and I just, I hope that there's another public forum on that, prior to, certainly prior to going, and people have a lot of good ideas, and there wasn't, certainly not universal support for it, at least that was the impression I got, but at any rate, there were a lot of, a lot of comments and questions and food for, food for thought, and I just, I hope that we have another opportunity for our folks to weigh in on that, because it's kind of a big thing.
No, it is a big thing, it's, yeah.
It'd be amazing thing if we could actually get it. Let me see, the timeline is definitely challenging, and I don't know if we, we definitely don't have funding to bring the engineers back, but if it's just us getting.
Oh, yeah, I hope you need the engineers, I think we've seen the, we've seen the plan.
Yeah, and again, it's really, it's somewhat us, but it's also the police commission, so we could see if maybe they dedicate part one of their meetings to getting some more input and feedback, because I, I felt like a lot of the questions and comments were more to do with local traffic authority issues, not all, but a lot of them, so it was a little bit challenging to answer them from our point of view, a lot of questions. A lot of questions about the light and the left turn at Mason's Island and-
Yeah.
But we also might be able to get the traffic person from the COG to come, who's like the expert on this for the whole region, or maybe even someone from DOG to come.
I mean, that would be good to have a traffic. I wasn't able to get to the meeting, but that would be great to have a, a traffic person, because, because you're right, almost everything I hear has to do with the traffic and the light.
Let me see what we can do with that. All right, so we'll follow up on that one, too. Anything else?
Nope.
So on the boat house, the bids are due tomorrow, and Friday, we're having a meeting to open them. There's like a reveal, and we'll see if we have enough money, we'll see what the bids came in at. And obviously, we'll update it right, right away when we see, um, the Board of Finance, when we see where we are with that. But we had a lot of people come to the walkthrough, which was great, just really concerned we're going to be short on funding, but hopefully, hopefully not. And again, they did five or six separate bids at the end, so hopefully, that keeps the costs down and how this kind of is a lot more work that way. And everybody did a great job, but hopefully, it does pay off in the end. So I think that was really good.
And ACOM is going to talk about our project at the hotel.
I know.
At the conference, the environmental, Brownfield-
Environmental conference, they're going to feature our projects, so we can get it done. Just, I think we've talked about this a little bit, but just, we're having a community pride event in Donahue Park on June 7th at 11:00 AM, and it's right ahead of the Pride in the Park that's happening at Wilcox Park at noon. So basically, the focus is like a positive message, our pub, we're doing like a solidarity sidewalk stroll, we want the literation for that. And then we're really excited that Wesley, uh, Town of Wesley agreed to join the Town of Stoneington to do a joint proclamation. Actually, that was really wonderful. And we did run this by the PD and the Waterfront Commission, everybody felt like it was okay, the impact should be minimal. So again, the group we've been working with has been just so wonderful, and again, just really trying to make a positive. If you guys can come, that'd be wonderful, or have people come.
What time?
11:00 AM is ours, and again, kind of informal, like that kind of poster-sized paper to make positive messaging, and then have it take pictures, but then also walk over, then to the Wilcox Park does a much bigger thing. But they kind of are allowing us to participate and come over. So we thought we'd, and then we thought people could get like some local sandwiches, like from, you know, Bov's or the bagel shop from Flower Shop, or some ice cream from Mel's, kind of support some local businesses, and then bring it over, have a little picnic in the park. So hopefully, it'll be a nice event. And I should end on a nice thing, but I'm not going to. I spent yesterday in Hartford, and I'm spending most of tomorrow in Hartford again. I'm going to try and put on my diplomatic face. It's been very frustrating engaging our state leaders, and again, no, like, our delegation has been very open and very wonderful about listening to things and trying to help us, but we've been reaching out, has like council of governments, reaching out to other councils of government through CCM and COS, our other associations, and just really doesn't feel like we're being heard at the municipal level when it comes to unfunded mandates and tax exemption issues, and why we have the third highest tax rate in this country for property taxes, and we're trying to come as good partners and to be proactive and come up with ideas and how this could be better looked at and heard, and it's really, we're not making much progress. So we're going to keep trying. If you guys have any ideas for other angles to take, we are luckily getting a few meetings with a few people in different leadership positions and different parties, but it's been very challenging. And yesterday, the Senate did end up passing this municipal camp regulation bill. It's going to go to the House. Pretty much every town that we've talked to and park and rec director has, you know, very major concerns about this, could really, really be detrimental, in my opinion, to the children that participate in these camps and to our town budgets, but we're really not being heard. So, yeah.
Is there a database or a list of these unfunded mandates?
So CCM, we actually asked them, because like, they have done a number of reports, and they've identified 1,400, but like, there's not like a great listing of each and every one. So we actually just, it's a great question, because we just asked them to be like, give a great few, if I can Excel or something, where we could actually see all these and go through them. But I think that's also part of the point, is like, they're so all over the place that-
Well, I mean, there are a lot of things that are unfun, that can be considered unfunded mandates that are just how we live, regulation, how we go.
Yeah. But I think the idea is to like, let's do a holistic view of them and really understand them, what's needed, what's not, and really look at, you know, and it's different, obviously, for every town and city, but like, on average, how much are these really costing us? Are there other ways we could go about them? And in the meantime, can we please pause the new ones that you keep adding on every single year? And can we be part of the conversation? So we have suggestions in there that OPM should have a fiscal note before it comes out of committee? Like, can you imagine going to the Board of Finance and asking to fund something? Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. We have no idea how much it's going to cost, but yeah, let's all vote for it and approve it. That is insanity. Like, I don't know, there's no way to sugarcoat that. So I don't know how you can vote to support something if you don't know the cost of it. So that's like a pretty, I think, basic upgrade that we could get in Hartford. At least, let's be honest about the cost of these things before we pass them. So we have some things like that, we have other, you know, more in-depth asks, really looking at tax exemptions as a whole. They did a report in 2017 that's just been sitting on the shelf, like, could we please revisit that and really look at it and have real conversations around it? And the other thing is like, whenever you're having a bill that impacts municipality, please engage them, have us as a stakeholder, have our tax assessors, or our parks directors, or whoever it is, our police departments as stakeholders, because that too, all too often doesn't happen. And then just change, also suggestions for changes to how they do the hearing process, like, somebody could be up there, a nonprofit, we've heard from a lot of nonprofits, they have minimal staffing, they're up there all day to testify on a bill, they might not get called until 1:00 in the morning, but people who are out of state or calling in, because it's like a random drawing, can get picked away before them. So why not at least prioritize Connecticut residents and people who are in, physically in Hartford, you know, there to testify first, then go to the people who are remote? Like, some things that aren't that, you know, I think it's just ideas that hopefully just maybe haven't been thought of and are easy to change. And again, these weren't like, you know, we solicited a lot of feedback from a lot